...council Tuesday, February 1st. Please stand for our invocation by Pastor Cleveland McFarland, St. Peter Missionary Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just about got almost a full house this morning. And welcome to our weekly meeting. Today is the first day of February. And February is one of the months that we live up to our motto, born to celebrate. In the month of February, we celebrate from Black History Month to Mardi Gras. And today, we celebrate in at least four members on this council as they first non-the day end on the council. So we have a lot to celebrate, living up to our motto, born to celebrate. This is our statement of rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his/her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. Again, it would be two bells. One at the end of two minutes, then the second will come after your last minute. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Final clerk.
Mr. President, please note that all addresses will be made from the microphone at the top of the stairs.
All speakers that are to address the council, you must speak on the top of the stairs at the podium.
Approval of minutes from January 25th.
Still move?
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody here this morning. Don't know if you picked it up on the news last night, but yesterday, there was a huge economic development announcement by Airbus and Lockheed Martin. Yesterday, we were fortunate to have not just the chairmans of their boards joining us, but also the two U.S. senators, Senator Shelby, Senator Tuberville, Representative Jerry Karl, Governor Ivey. The announcement had to do with a partnership that's been created between Airbus and Lockheed Martin, and that is to build a tanker. And to build a tanker in the city of Mobile. You know, it was probably this conversation started in 2005 is when it first started about building a tanker. Mobile probably at that time, I'm not sure, was selected as a site. Many of the citizens realized that even though the city of Mobile and Airbus won the project years ago, that it was taken away from us. So in that interim, there's yet to be a tanker built by the competition that was awarded the contract. And that was since 2012. So we're a country's in desperate need of building a tanker, and Lockheed Martin and Airbus are teaming up to make sure that happens. And so it's a really big deal for our community and for our warfighters and for aviation in general in the city of Mobile and the Gulf Coast. Also, if you've had the opportunity to walk into either the Battle House or the Renaissance, you'll notice some giants of men. The Senior Bowl players are here. They're really big like always. I think they're really excited. You know, part of our objective in the city of Mobile is to make sure that we tee up them and give them that opportunity to show their skill sets because so much of their future really will depend on how well they do in the city, excuse me, do in the Senior Bowl this week. So we wish all of the very best. From the public's perspective, there is an opportunity this Friday night, there's a players' parade and a concert following that at Cathedral Square. And the concert is from 6:00 to 7:30. Portugal the Man is performing. It's free. And what will happen is that the players will walk down Royal Street, turn up Dolphin Street, and then they'll stop at Cathedral Square. So if you want to have an opportunity to see the players, that would be a great time to do it. My understanding from talking with one of the Senior Bowl officials last night, they still have a few tickets available, so you can go online and purchase those tickets. Gates at the game open at 11:30. Kickoff is at 1:30. Remind you that it's a kind of a clear bag event, that you have to have ladies that are carrying purses in. Anything that you have has got to be in a clear bag. So a big week for the city of Mobile regarding the Senior Bowl. And you know, we want to make sure that everybody feels very welcome because you'll certainly bump into some of the coaches, the scouts, and the general managers if you're anywhere downtown or out at South Alabama. As Council President Small said, this is the first day of Black History Month. So throughout this month, there'll be numerous announcements of activities that will be occurring throughout the next, throughout the month of February. Also, I'd like to make a comment about one of the items that's on the agenda this morning, and it has to do with what we're calling Project Echo Stop. It has to do with the Shot Spotter, and it's a very important detection tool in public safety. But it's just one piece of a much broader operation aimed at combating gun violence. And every citizen in Mobile knows the challenge that we have with gun violence. Operating Operation Echo Stop, it has four key areas. One is prevention, it's deterrence, compliance, and detection. Relying on Shot Spotter is just a part of that. It's kind of a last part of this equation. The operation is a combination of tools, people, analysts, victim services, youth intervention, community partnerships, and technology. In the coming months, there'll be opportunities for the community to get involved through the school system, your workplace, neighborhoods, and more. The federal funding that we're using for this allows us to leverage existing programs and resources so that we can make sure that we continue to address this menace in our community. Also, this past weekend, I want to thank the city's environmental engineering department. We hosted a very successful event at Seals Park, and it had to do with the collection of hazardous waste. We had over 470 cars drive through, dropping off their hazardous waste, which amounted to about 50,000 pounds of stuff that sometimes people may be putting in landfills, which doesn't need to go in landfills, it needs to be properly disposed of. So thank you to our environmental engineering department and also to those citizens that took advantage of that opportunity. Regarding a recycling survey, we recently conducted that to gauge the cities, the citizens' interest in recycling. The results of that survey will be released today. And I think one of the decisions that already has been made is that we want to start exploring the opportunity for one additional recycling drop-off site for the city of Mobile. And actually, another part of that on today's agenda is a request to the council to apply for a grant to seek funding for that third site. So, Mr. President, that concludes, no, excuse me, I want to call on Joe Snowden to introduce an employee of the month.
Good morning. This is a very exciting time for administrative services. We finally put together a program to recognize our employees that work within administrative services. And often, a lot of their work goes unseen, but it's vital, and it's behind the scenes to keep the city running forward. And just to give a quick overview, administrative services includes IT, human resources, 3-1-1, civic and cultural affairs, procurement, the cruise ship terminal, and animal services. So to like to congratulate Victoria Williams and then ask Leslie Ray to kind of give an introduction of the many great things she's done.
Good morning. On behalf of Human Resources and Payroll, I'm pleased to present our employee of the month, Victoria Williams. Victoria is vital to the daily operations of our department because she helps us with all of our computer systems. We have our HR and payroll systems, timekeeping systems. We have other systems that we deal with outside agencies such as the retirement system. We have a lot of annual reporting and compliance issues that we deal with. I think everybody got their W-2s on time. Your 1095 statements will be out soon. There's a lot of things. In behind the scenes, Victoria is always there, holding our hands, making sure that we're doing what we need to do. She's very detail oriented. She researches the issues. She helps us with tech support when needed with our maintenance applications. She makes sure that we're proceeding in the right direction whenever we have upgrades to those modules. She keeps great notes. Every year, when it's time to do the reporting, she pulls out her notes and she helps us through that, so everything runs smoothly and on time. She's very patient with us. I know we can be challenging, and she's always patient and has a wonderful attitude. And I really think she needs to be employee of the month every month because she really holds us together. So I congratulate Victoria and thank her for all that she does for us.
She doesn't want to say anything.
As Councilmember Penn comes to do some presentation, I would like to recognize one student in the audience, Ms. Madison Thornton. She's doing her government stand-up. Yeah, she's doing her government report today, and she's a student at Faith Academy. Welcome to our meeting.
Good morning, everyone. If I could ask the Trenton Garden football team to come down, make your way. First, I would like to congratulate the Trenton Garden Falcons. On behalf of the Mobile City Council, we would like to recognize you for your outstanding accomplishments on defeating, it's kind of hard to say because I played for them, so I didn't want to wipe this here, but for defeating the Eight Mile Giants in the 7U Division, Alabama Youth State Championship. I want y'all to make some noise for these young men that came out representing District One. Thank you, guys. I would like to also thank the coaching staff, Mr. Turnwell, that they volunteered their time, guys, to go back into the community and give back. And that's what it's about. It's about investing in our young people. So thank you, coaches, for everything that you are doing. They got the wins.
And, Mr. President, before they leave, can we all gather around and get a quick photo?
Yes, of course.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Also, I would like to say, they also went to the national championship game as well. So thank you for representing the city of Mobile.
Adoption of this agenda.
Still move?
Second. Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? A generalist adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on March 10th through the 13th in Cathedral Square and June 13th in Cooper Riverside Park.
Still move?
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Phil passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to rezon property located at 118 Gilmore Knott Street from R1 to B2, 117 North Catherine Street from R1 to B2, 2621 Ralston Road from R1 and B2 to B2.
This will open up the public hearing for the said properties. If anyone would like to address the council, you may do so at this time at the podium above. If not, public hearing is closed. Also, at this time, I ask if anyone has a cellphone, please put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Final clerk.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 1530 Northview Drive, 624 Crawford Lane, 1306 Persimmon Street, 1801 Pike Avenue, 2006 Stockton Avenue.
This will open up the public hearing for the said properties. If anyone would like to address the council for internal properties, you may do so at this time at the podium above. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to George Austin St. Clair doing businesses Mob City Rides to operate a sedan service.
This will open up the public hearing for the approval of the certificate of public convenience. If anyone would like to address the council at this time, you may do so at this time. So address the council at the podium above. Make sure you give us your name and your address, please.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is George Austin St. Clair. I live at 1201 MacArthur Place Court in Mobile, Alabama, 36609. This is my wife, Denise. We are longtime members of Mobile. Lifetime, we are asking for a certificate of public convenience and necessity for our company, Mob City Rides LLC. Mob City Rides is a golf cart transportation company, mainly serving in the downtown Mobile area. All our carts are equipped with seatbelt and certified street legal. Many cities such as Nashville, Houston, Tuscaloosa, Auburn, offer these types of short-distance, low-fare options. With the expansion and growth of the business in the downtown area, we hope to help locals and tourists travel safely and with convenience. Thank you.
There any questions upcoming from the council?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Mr. Daves?
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here today. Is it your intention to operate the golf carts solely within the downtown area?
That will be our beginning. We hope to be able to work with South Alabama and any other universities, colleges to assist them. Also, special events, short distances. These vehicles cannot go on road over 35 miles an hour. We're aware of that, and so we would not be going anywhere where we'd endanger anybody.
But the, Mr. Harland, but the request as it's situated before would allow the operation of these vehicles anywhere within the city limits of Mobile. Is that correct? Why are you looking that up? Let me ask the administration. Have we granted a certificate of public convenience and necessity to any other entity operating golf carts for hire on the streets of the city of Mobile?
I'm not aware of any other ones at this time. I'd have to check to see if they've done so, but I'm not aware of any at this time, council.
Okay, thank you.
While the attorney is looking at that up, any other council member have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Since you were looking to be citywide potentially in the future, my specific question points to heavily trafficked corridors, four-lane highways, the interstate that you envision taking, no, you're saying no?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So this would be primarily for special events around the college, downtown?
Right. These vehicles cannot, these vehicles cannot go over 25 miles an hour, and they're not allowed on streets over 35 miles an hour. So our drivers know that they're not allowed on any street. So we've checked all the streets in the downtown area to make sure that they're all within, where we'll be driving will be within that 35 miles per hour. The other areas, if we choose to do like small events, they'll have to be, we'll have to make sure that we're, because we're not allowed. It's, you know, it would be unsafe for us and for our drivers to put them on those routes.
And you do stay on the road? You don't go up onto sidewalks?
Right. They're, they're street legal. They're, I mean, seatbelts, the whole thing. So yeah, they're no different than a, I guess, a motorcycle or a scooter or a close type.
There are some privately owned golf carts that people drive that are all street legal. They have turn signals, lights, hazards, seatbelts.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah. How many of these golf carts do you see putting in operation in the downtown area?
Currently, right now, only two. Possibly expanding to three, six. And they're both six-seaters right now. So hopefully, we can expand as business determines.
Mr. President, I would like to see some type of impact statement on how this would impact traffic flow in the downtown area and any risks, safety risk associated with this is, you know, we, again, we've got a lot of different means and modes of transportation going on in a very small area with high pedestrian traffic area. What I foresee is golf carts stopping in the middle of the road to let on passengers, let off passengers, accept payment, et cetera. So I just think we need to look at this before we consider it for a vote.
Mr. Harland?
It would be the whole city.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, just a note here so that the people in the city get a clear idea of what's happening here. Downtown, we have pedal carts where people pedal and ferry people along for donations. We have golf carts, we have scooters. In various situations, we have carts or trolleys where there's six or seven in there. This is just another mode of transportation that also provides another way to, I hope, assist people getting back and forth to hotels that may not need to drive after they've, that they've entertained themselves in our districts downtown. If we can allow a rickshaw and a man pulling someone down the street, then I think we can allow a golf cart with them driving them down the street at a safe rate of speed if they're legal. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I do agree with Mr. Carroll. Mr. St. Clair, is there a timeframe you're trying to go into business by, I mean?
Yes, sir. We, we weren't quite aware of all the, what we had to do with the city, and we've, we've invested, we've put a time, we're trying to get this going as soon as possible. We'd like to be able to work with the Mardi Gras as Mardi Gras gets started. If this gets approved, then we'll be able to get our business license and move forward with this, hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Anything from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm just very briefly, I've asked that we allow this thing to just go through the, actually, I asked for it to be held for two weeks, but it'll be held one week by rule and give us an opportunity to work with the enforcement arm of our government and legislative branch to somehow mitigate the issue that could come along with a citywide permit to operate a golf cart on a, on a street. And I, I do join with Mr. Carroll and Mr. Small that I'd love to find some sort of resolution that accommodates everyone so that we can transport people and that sort of thing. We just got to go about it the right way. I hate that it has come to our attention with, with your application. So I ask that we just hold it a week, allow some discussion to continue on this.
Just one question to our city attorney or either our council attorney. He's applying for this certificate of public convenience. Could there be like a date that just say this is good up to April 30th until the council have time and administration have time to actually look at an ordinance? If that's possible?
Yeah, that's possible. Yes.
It's something that we might probably be, you know, considering doing next week, you know, because there have been some concerns about having the ordinance on the book and et cetera. But again, like you said, Mr. St. Clair, we're going to hold this over for one week, and then we're going to try and address this on next Tuesday. Anything else from the council?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
I'm fully supportive of what we're doing with this, and thank you for bringing this. Obviously, the need downtown just proves how successful we are downtown. This question really pertains to the privately owned, smaller golf carts that are in a lot of our neighborhoods. I don't want those folks to be confused with what we are doing here because I see those as two totally different issues. Because a lot of us do get phone calls, some complaining about golf carts full of kids driving around on city streets and on sidewalks and that kinds of thing. So we might want to separately look at something like that, see what we're doing and what we might need to do in the future for, for those. But nothing to do with what you're doing. Sorry to open that up, but just in the future.
Anything else from the council? Yeah, Mr. Harland?
The, looking at the ordinance, in general, it's a one-year approval. They're supposed to renew it every year. And then one other thing, which I don't know if this is really applicable, but they cannot operate around the airport. They can't pick up people from the airport, which probably ain't going to be an issue And then there's a provision about temporary for hire permits, but it says to existing certificate holders, which is kind of, doesn't really work together, but it talks about a 15-day permit. But I don't know how that correlates with the existing, since he doesn't have one personally.
So, Mr. Harland, you said that he has to come back yearly? If this is for golf carts only?
If this is approved, it would be a one year, is what I'm saying.
Okay, and this is? Okay, and this is, this is for golf carts only? Or is this other?
Any, any business that gets one of these certificates, when they're approved, that it's for a year? They don't have to come back to the council every year, but it does get renewed with the city every year?
Oh, okay, 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 gotcha. Anything else from the council? Thank you so much, Mr. President.
I was just gonna say one last thing. We have taken one of them to Corporal Dennis Johnson at the Traffic Department, Mobile Police. He's approved the vehicle, plus we are having to get our chauffeur's permit. We just don't drive with our regular driver's license. We have to get a chauffeur's permit and fingerprints and background checks and all those other items. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak on this particular public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Sabrina Mass.
And just as Ms. Mass apports the podium on top, reminding all speakers that it's three minutes, you will hear the warning bell at two minutes, and your last bell that you hear, your time has expired, and also asking the audience to maintain their decor with no undue applause nor public outcry. Ms. Mass.
Good morning, council. Good morning, Mayor Sampson and the administration and the city clerk staff, and good morning to the beautiful people of the citizens of Mobile. I'm Sabrina Mass, I live at 1050 Beverly Hills Circle West. And today, I would like to honorably introduce to all a representative of the Klataida descendants, Mrs. Pat Fraser, which is in attendance, and also mention Mr. Darren Patterson for entrusting me with the task, as he cannot be present today as he has a previous engagement. Also, I would like to present to all and welcome a true playwright and fellow texting to the city of Mobile, Mr. Terrence Spivey, as I would like to read his bio, which is a shortened version of his many accomplishments. Terrence Spivey has a BA in Theater Arts at Prairie View A&amp;M University in Texas. He was also a member of the College Theater Troop, the Charles Gibson Players who toured all over Texas. While a student, he performed at the Kennedy Center in New Orleans, World's Fair. After graduation, he resided in New York City for eighteen years. Colt continued honing his craft in Meisner Technique at Fame William Esper Studios. He appeared in numerous off-Broadway plays at the Sanford Meisner Theater, National Black Theater, Michael Chekko Studio. His additional credits include One Life to Live, music videos Lies, The Fat Boys, No One in the World, Anita Baker, directed by Spike Lee. He has also worked with theater legends Deje, Franklin, Leslie Uggums, Arthur French, Clebert Ford, Katamou alumnus. In 2003, Spivey was recruited as the artistic director for the oldest black theater in the country, Katamou House, in Cleveland, Ohio, where he programs over seventy plays and built collaborations with local theaters and festivals. During his artistic tenure, he worked with the likes of the late Ruby Dee, Richard Brooks, and Bill Cobb. Spivey has received many honors and awards throughout the years, from where he resides in Cleveland, Ohio, to an international platform. He has also garnered social awareness awards on racism. He is also artistic associate for Imani Community Theater, the first black theater company in Mobile, Alabama, in which he has an upcoming play, An Ocean in My Bones, which will be showcased about the Klataida and the people she carry. The play will be presented by the Klataida Descendants Association during the Spirit of Our Ancestors Festival in Africa Town, with works to continue as a longer version. As noted at this point, Mr. Spivey is a genuine playwright talent who I am honored to let the people of Mobile, Alabama, meet him today.
Good evening, everyone. As Ms. Mass said, I'm the, I was the artistic director of the oldest black theater in the country, Cleveland, Ohio, Katamou House. I just wanna say those who know of the movie Superfly, back in the seventies, Ron O'Neal who played the lead, he trained at Katamou. Matter of fact, Langston Hughes, who was really the true alum there, it's his birthday today. I was brought here a couple of years ago about, from Greg Ciprian. I knew Mobile, Alabama, of course. I knew the Klataida, I knew the Henrietta, I knew the Amistad, but I didn't know about the extension of Klataida here in Mobile, Alabama. He brought me to, across the tracks to Africa Town. I was amazed. Then he showed me around more, I was even more amazed. I was even more amazed when he told me that Mobile was the ones that brought, that created the Mardi Gras. I didn't even know that. So, years later, a year ago, that's when, uh...
Yes, excuse me, sir, I apologize. I look forward in the future to hearing more of your stories and everything.
Yeah.
And Ms. Mass, thank you so much for bringing him down and introducing him to the city of Mobile. Thank you all so much and everything, okay? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. That's why I stayed a room about three times this morning. Madame Plurp?
Terry Mitchell, following Terry Mitchell, Anna Bush.
Good morning, I think Terry and I have our times reversed, but y'all get to listen to me first. I'm Anna Bush, I live at 21 Bembel Avenue 36606. I was appointed to the council's Animal Service Committee for District Two. Our report was provided three weeks ago, and I hope you've had a time to at least peruse it. I don't know if I should quiz you or not. We are proud of the product and believe it represents a very new, good new day and a new vision for animal welfare in our city, but it's a starting point. Exhibit B to the report is a 2017 report that describes the need for a new shelter. But in addition to the need for a new shelter, and I'm, I'm speaking of an animal shelter, I know we've had so many conversations here, in addition to the need for a new shelter, it pointed out almost $500,000 worth of near immediate improvements that were needed at the current shelter. Nearly none of those things have been done. Five years ago, essentially, nothing. Our committee could have said, build another shelter, hire more people, we're done here. But no, we know the shelter is just a manifestation of the neglect with which the city seems to have left this animal care. I don't think it's a deliberate maliciousness, it's simply something that has not been given the attention of all the other things here in the city. There is no question about the inadequacy of the facility. Please help us address that. In conjunction with that, policy and law must improve in terms of licensing and enforcement, spay and neuter laws. Use a carrot and stick approach, let's, let's incentivize fixing these animals, but let's also be punitive toward these people who are relentlessly breeding and not licensing and not paying as breeders a business, a cost that we, the citizens, are having to pick up. Encourage TNR as a means of dealing with cats. This is a departure, this is a big departure from what the city has done. What the city has done is basically said you can't do that. Fixing and releasing cats in the area where they are in general is not problematic. We deal with the problem areas as they come along, but we can do it. This has got to be made more imperative, this has become more imperative even this month. We've got to get law enforcement, animal control, 3-1-1, and police dispatch on the same page when it comes to receiving citizen complaints. Citizens are facing a Sisyphean past just trying to get the information to animal control. 3-1-1 says this animal control's not open on the weekend. Animal control has a on-call person. The police show up, they say it's an animal control problem. The police show up, they say there's nothing they can do, even though it's clearly a ticketable offense. There's just a lot of communication and potentially educational errors that need to be addressed or gaps, I should say, not rather than errors. The report, this report calls for more training of both, and animal control, police and animal control to address this problem. Never should a citizen be, should, should be told that an animal tethered in the cold without adequate food and water is a problem for Monday. This is a violation and worthy of a ticket, and it happens constantly. It would, it would be almost comic if it weren't so chronic. Please, again, read the report, ask the council attorney, the, the administration attorney, and the concerned citizens to create a way to, a path forward based on the recommendations, many of which are in this report. There's some model laws, there's some examples, there's some other cities in the south, Gulfport and Huntsville are great examples, but there's other cities that we can look to for what they've done, both in law and in policy. And please fix your animals. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I would like to also say that I do, you know, commend the administration, and know they are doing more now than pretty much the city has done in several years with our animal shelter and everything. And even though they're not perfect, the city's not at the perfect position, but I do commend them for getting there with the leadership of Mr. Snowden and everything. But again, also, thank you so much for your hard work and everything, and your volunteer. I'm sorry, your time has expired, yeah, but thank you so much and everything.
Terry Mitchell with the Animal Advisory Committee. We trust that you have had time to read the report.
This Mitchell, your address?
Address.
Okay, yeah, we need your name and your address there.
Oh, Terry Mitchell, 117 West Halle Court, with the Animal Advisory Committee. We trust that you've had time to read the report. According to what we found, the money spent on animal services can't be measured in mere dollars. It can be measured in the quality of life for the people of the city. And that's basically all I have to say. Do you have any questions about the report? Any questions?
No, I, I don't have any questions, but I do thank you guys for sending it to me. I got it from Anna, I wanna say, two weeks ago. I'm probably about fifty percent through it. It's quite a lot of information. There was an executive summary sent to me also, and I appreciate that. I am appreciative of the city's current effort, especially trying to catch these Polk Street dogs that we still haven't caught yet, and I know everybody's worried about that. Spay and neuter centers are a big issue, I saw that in there, and the cost of a center individual is extreme, and I don't know if we're ready for that yet. I know we have some funds that are unfunded in, in the budget that could be possibly used there, but there's an awful lot to get us up to the standards of other cities that you guys have given us, and it's not gonna be something we can do overnight because from what I've seen, it's gonna take several million dollars to get there based on the report that you guys have given me. And again, I'm only halfway through it, and there's still more to read and to comprehend based on what you guys have found. And please note that this ad hoc committee was asked to be convened by the previous council, so it's brand-new to me and this council because when I was here eight years ago, this didn't exist at all, and our animal shelter was still in the same condition it was from, I guess, from when I was a child going out there to pick out a puppy or a dog, to have a pet in our house too. So I commend you for your effort. I look forward to continuing to work with you and animal, animal advocates in the city as we move forward to try to resolve this, and especially with the administration as we continue to try to catch those dogs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another council member? Again, thank you all so much for your hard work and everything, and again, we, the procedure reports that we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Patterson, following Reverend Patterson, would be Reverend Green.
Good morning to the city, leadership of Mobile, Alabama. I stand as a representative of the Ministry of Alliance of Mobile to say to you that you are on the cusp of transformational leadership in this city. Many great things are right before us, so I want to be concise in what I believe will work well for our city. First of all, our city, we have an opportunity to become a model city.
Yeah, Reverend Patterson, can you give us your name and your address, please?
Willie, Willie Patterson, I'm sorry, 1751 Marlin Avenue 36618.
Thank you.
Three minutes, preacher has to go fast. And so I wanna give you just maybe four or five nuggets to just to, maybe have you contemplate. The city can be a model city. And how do we make Mobile a model city? First of all, we need to become more open to all citizens in the redistricting process. I appreciate what I've seen online thus far. Looks like we're doing that, and we applaud you for that. But then secondly, we need to build back the neglected communities of Mobile. Please include every district in the city's budget. Be as inclusive as possible in the communication and participation in shaping the city. You have an opportunity to build a legacy, to become a lasting legacy for Mobile, Alabama. Then I'll close with, we can be, I guess I'll call an example for others to emulate. Enduring communities for years to come. No neglect, be it north, south, east or west, Mobile. All of our communities are built up, and we're appreciative to see what's going on with Texas Street and that part of Mobile County, Mobile, the city of Mobile. We want to encourage you, leaders, to be as inclusive as possible, and let's not neglect communities that have really gone in almost state of disrepair in some instances. Now, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And again, all speakers, please give your name and your address.
Reverend Green, and following Reverend Green is Reverend McFarland.
My name is L.C. Green, 1500 Hillcrest Road, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here just to bring a few things to our attention with this redistrict. I passed in District Seven, and I live in District Six. So I'm, I'm real concerned when we start dealing with numbers. Every year, I have to give a report about my membership, and the first question they ask me is how many members do I have? So I jump up there and I holler whatever I wanna holler, and then they ask me, so how many of those are registered voters? So what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that when we're talking about majority and minority, we need to make sure that we are considering the people of voting age, the people of vote. We can say we got a thousand folks, but ain't but three hundred of them voting age. So I, I'd ask y'all very, very, very carefully to please look at in this redistrict, and if you're trying to be, if you're trying to be fair, that we would, that we would consider those who are voting age. And I think that, I think that it's very easy to find that out. As I, as I understand what you're doing now, whether we're gonna gain a minority or we're gonna lose a minority. And as I look at the population now, I think at this particular time right now, there should be another minority already on the city council. So we can't stand to lose another one, and if you deal with just numbers, I think we be, I'm afraid that we might miss our mark. So I ask you, please, those of you who are involved in the redistrict, that we would, we would really look at the voting age folks. I got a family of five, but ain't but two of us are voting age. If you just put down five for my household, you're not really in a... My last, my last minute, I want to ask you this, if we, and I heard the, the speaker before me talking about an example, Mobile is an example, and I'm not gonna argue that. But let's do this, if we're an example, let's do something that I have not seen a city do. I would like for us, Mobile, to write, to put together a resolution, Mr. Mayor, that we can send to Washington and ask our senators and representatives to support, to support the John Lewis Voting Rights Act. And I think that it would make a big difference if all of you would sign a resolution like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend McFarland, following Reverend McFarland is Reverend Thorne.
My name is Cleveland McFarland, 1525 West Carlisle Drive, Mobile, Alabama. To the president, council members, and mayor, this administration talks a lot about best practices and using them to avoid mistakes, especially costly mistakes other municipalities have made. We have seen this work well for Mobile in the past, but now more than ever, we, the taxpayers of Mobile, need the mayor and the council to focus on the best practices that can avoid these obvious pitfalls. We need you all to do this because we are on the verge of making a huge costly mistake for the city and its taxpayers. So far, it is, it is a current, in this certain current redistricting process, we have only seen... we have only seen proposed maps that are not in keeping with federal law. The twenty twenty census has shown us that the city of Mobile has a majority black population, and the city council district represented in this redistricting process must reflect that. Unfortunately, the maps and the numbers received and released to the public so far fail to meet this requirement of the Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, which makes it clear that the voting age population, not general population, must be taken into account when drawing these lines. If we don't do this right, if we do this wrong, if the mayor present in the next few weeks does not present a correctly reflection of the majority black population shown in the twenty twenty census, there will be not only the public cry that you've already heard, but no doubt there will be a costly legal action that the taxpayers must have to pay. Let's don't go down that road. Let's do what is right and what is legal in the beginning. Please, we urge you, present and adopt a map with four majority black districts based on the voting age population, not general population. This is the only way that we can avoid a costly mistake for our city and its taxpayers. And yes, it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Reverend Thorne, following Reverend Thorne is Reverend Brown.
Uh, great morning. Um, my name is Reverend Dr. Titus Thorne, the pastor of Big Zion Amysine Church. I reside at one ten South Bio Street here in the city, and also serve residing in the other of the Mobile District. Um, as my rival down here today, I rode down Government Street, and I saw in the Chamber of Commerce building, I believe in Mobile. But my question is, which one? Uh, it's obvious that we're living in two different Mobiles. Uh, Mobile West of I sixty-five, which is flourishing, Mobile East of I sixty-five, which is not flourishing. I realize that this is stemmed from discrimination practices on how the city tax dollars have been spent over many decades on infrastructure, investments and services on the west side of I sixty-five, not on the east side of I sixty-five. Um, the current and political economic system has not worked well, matter of fact, not at all, uh, for the progression of Black Mobileians, uh, in their neighborhoods, especially here on the east side. Um, according to the twenty twenty census, the reality is that, uh, Mobile is a majority black city. And that means that a new city council district must be with a majority of black voters, must be drawn to reflect this new reality. Uh, the, the way the districts are drawn would impact how city services are delivered, where infrastructure improvements should be made. And with money flowing from the Biden administration, we both have funding and numbers to improve of conditions of underserved communities on the east side. Uh, citizens in the new district can elect a representative who will make sure their needs and wants are delivered politically. Uh, the map and table that the mayor released show that District Seven is now a district with more than fifty percent of voting age citizens are African-American. Its lines should be drawn to ensure that those black citizens' voting power is not diluted in any way. Uh, we also believe that the voting power of black citizens in District Two should also not be diluted under any circumstance. Uh, the needs of new residents moving into parts of downtown, the Oakley Historic District, or down the Bay should not overshadow the needs of long-time residents on Davis Avenue, in the campground, in the bottom in Orange Grove, whose needs have been neglected. It is evidence about deteriorating homes and lack of new infrastructure and economic investments compared to what's going on in the west side. Uh, we are particularly concerned about Africa Town, which is also in District Two. It is, uh, rightly got worldwide attention because of the cotilde discovery. But what about the continuing pollution and the new toll bridge that will force more traffic into that naturally stored district? We need to vest, invest in that area. Uh, because we spent taxpayer dollars on decrepit old credit union owned by the sentence of the plantation masters who illegally sent the cotilde to the Africa forced slave. Why not make real, meaningful investments in Africa Town? To attract tourists to our city to learn about the true black history while also creating jobs for people who live there? Be assured, we will lift our voices to protect the redistricting process from abuse. And we strongly encourage those in city halls to make the fair decision which will support all residents of City of Mobile, but especially those underserved and neglected on the east side. Yes, we share that se- the same concerns that have been brought to the mayor and city council by other speakers, the expectations are the same as ours. That the lines that's drawn by the mayor's staff may provide a majority of the African-American citizens in four di- in four districts does not ensure a majority of African-American voters in those districts. Please reflect the census demographic percentages in the African-American voter count for council districts. Two, we urge the mayor and council to go about the process in a transparent way that allows true community engagement.
Thank you.
Reverend Brown, followed by Pastor Marvin Lou Junior.
My name is Reverend Dr. Corey Brown. I reside at seven zero three nine Doppel Lane. I pastor Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, located at five forty-five Cody Road North. I personally am a transplant to the city of Mobile. I love living here. I love the culture. I love the hospitality. I love its deep spiritual and biblical beliefs, and I certainly love the food. I also love and appreciate its diversity, uh, specifically the opportunity to live in a city that's majority black and majority minority. This fact, according to the twenty twenty census, is a rare phenomenon in our country that is a reality in the city of Mobile. Equally important is the opportunity and right for this majority black city is to have representation that reflects its demographics. Forgive me of my newness to the city of Mobile, and perhaps my tardiness to the party of this council, but I've heard the concerns of the people I serve. I've heard the concerns of my colleagues and other community leaders. It has caused me to raise my level of attentiveness to the redistricting process currently underway. So permit me to ask some thought-provoking rhetorical questions as this council and the mayor secretly reapportioned its districts following the decennial federal census. Does this council and mayor appreciate, accept and embrace the reality that the city of Mobile is a majority black and majority minority city? Does this council and mayor uphold Section Two of the Voting Rights Act that require in acting a map, a majority of districts comprised of a majority of black voters from majority black districts? Does this council and mayor practice prohibiting annexation of population into the city that would dilute the political power of the black communities in Mobile? Does this council and mayor understand that it's illegal to pack bla- black voters into districts where they constitute an excessive majority while simultaneously depriving them of the ability to elect their candidates of choice in other districts? Your answers to these questions thus far should be a resounding yes. As an influential community leader in this city, I strongly urge you to simply uphold the laws of Alabama, embrace Section Two of the Voting Rights, ensure that the population of this city has adequate and equitable representation, and that no attempts of voter suppression in any form is taking place. It's been stated that those who are the latest and last are the loudest. I don't want to be loud. I just want to go back to my corner in District Seven and continue serving those communities and this city, believing that our city council and mayor will uphold the law and do what is right for this unique city that we all love and cherish. I appreciate your time in this matter. Thank you.
Pastor Lou, following Pastor Lou is Valerie Mitchell.
Good morning, city council. Good morning, administration. I am Pastor Marvin Charles Lou Junior, St. Memorial Sammy Church, twelve sixty-six Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, three six six zero three, as well as the primary community organizer of Faith in Action Alabama, the Mobile Hub. When I first arrived here in the city of Mobile, crossing the state line from my, my home of the Sunshine State, Florida, I saw the words, "Welcome to Alabama, the heart of Dixie." While I've been living here for the last eight years, I have come to the conclusion that Dixie needs a heart transplant, and it begins here in Mobile. In November and October, November of two, two thousand twenty-one, Faith in Action along with others started a campaign entitled, "We Want to Live." Stop Now, Live Now, We Want to Live, which was focused on the outrageous gun violence that had plagued our city. However, I realize now that "We Want to Live" just does not deal with Pookie shooting John John. It deals with us as a city really becoming one. We hear the name, we hear the motto of One Mobile, but I've learned something in my day, in my twenty-five years of pastoring the people of God, that the number seven is a powerful number. And as I look at our city council, I see seven. But those of us who know anything about the number seven, understand that seven means completion. That seven means wholeness. And if we are truly to be One Mobile, the seven must be one. We must be, we must continue to understand the concerns of minority communities when it comes to their place at the voting booths and having power in our city, because too many times we've been hoodwinked and bamboozled. We must be considerate of our citizens who do not live in the palatial palaces of Snow Road and Tillman's Corner, but have to look at their own sky, their, their own ceiling which looks like the stars in the sky, and deal with the elements on their own. We have to also be aware of the fact that we have come over a way with tears that has been watered. We have come treading the path of the blood of the slaughter. But out of our gloomy past, we plan to stand at last where the white gleam of hope, where the white gleam of justice, where the white gleam of equality, where the white gleam of unity truly shines here in this city. I am willing to, I am willing to pay the copay for Mobile to begin the process of giving this state, this region, the heart transplant that it needs.
Valerie Mitchell, following Valerie Mitchell is Vivian Beckerly.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Mitchell. I reside at twenty-three fifty-eight Spring Hill Avenue, Mobile, three six six oh seven. I'm a parishioner of All Saints Episcopal Church, one fifty-one South Anne Street, uh, three six six oh four. And I'm here as a representative of our church as well as speaking for myself. I'm speaking to urge the council to ensure that redistricting is done in such a way that racial minorities and particularly African-Americans are represented on the council in proportion to their numbers in the city's population. For me, this is a matter that is directly informed by my religious faith. Mobile and Mobileians love to proclaim our faith. We are, perhaps at times, a little less good at living it. My baptismal covenant, covenant included a promise to quote, "strive for justice and peace among all people and respect the dignity of every human being." I suspect that many people in this room have made some version of that commitment in the context of their own faith. Fulfilling that covenant is something I take seriously. It must include ensuring that our black and brown brothers and sisters have an equal voice in all matters pertaining to our community well-being. They must be represented in a way that rep- that recognizes their majority status in this city. Our country, our state, and this city have a shameful history of giving African-Americans a diluted voice, if a voice at all, in our governance. We have made progress in reversing that history, but we have a very long way to go. Calls by some to ignore race in our redistricting efforts, simply ignore that history and do so at risk to the health of our city. Relationships may indeed rise above race, but that can only happen when we establish trust by treating one another fairly. To argue otherwise is to ignore reality and human nature. In our Episcopal liturgy, we use a prayer of confession in which we ask for forgiveness for, quote, "the evil we have done and the evil done on our behalf." Allowing our fellow citizens of color to be underrepresented clearly falls within the evil done on our behalf. Rupert, one that I would personally feel the need to atone for. We have an opportunity right now to do the right thing and give our black citizens their full voice. And in so doing, make our city a better place for everyone to live in. And I urge the council to do so. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Vivian Beckerly, following Vivian Beckerly is Amy Andrews. Vivian's not here.
Ms. Beckerly, present.
Amy Andrews, following Amy Andrews is Ayesha Davis-Williams. Ms. Andrews.
Ms. Andrews, present.
Ayesha Davis-Williams, following Ayesha Davis-Williams is James Aberhart.
Ms. Williams.
Greetings. My name is Ayesha Davis-Williams. I reside at one one zero eight North Drive, three six six zero five, in District Three. I have been a resident of Mobile for a little over forty-two years. And I am here on today as an executive board member of Stand Up Mobile. I am a social worker by profession, and I have taken an oath to be of service to humanity and social justice. I take great pride in speaking up for those that are often marginalized and underserved in our community. I want to speak to the council on being fair and displaying equity in our city's redistricting process. It is important to the future of Mobile and that the mayor and the city council redraw the current districts to ensure that all our citizens are properly represented. Not only is it important, it is your obligation, understated federal law. It is best practice to use the census data, given this will allow you to reflect majority African-American voters in each district. The twenty twenty census and its data is the source that is used to draw these new lines. And from the census, we know that the city of Mobile has a population that is now majority African-American. As my co-founder, Ms. Beverly Cooper noted, as a group, we urge you to use transparency that will allow for our community, will allow for community engagement. Publicize and post final voter demographics, calling out the percentage of black voters per city council district. And we need to be informed of this information a week prior to finalization. So if you clearly understand, I ask, it should be noted that we are simply asking for fairness, transparency and due process in the re- in this redistricting process, as it will impact all citizens of Mobile. We have been faced with issues occurring in this city government that leaves people not to feel very trusting of governmental processes. I have heard from leaders that Mobile is a fair city, that it is inclusive to all its people. But that's not what I hear when I walk neighborhoods canvassing with community organizations, and even with my faith-based organizations, as we are out trying to meet the needs of those that have been forgotten. I want Mobile to be great, not only for our tourists, business industry and upper to middle class, but for all its people. And the only way we can ensure this is through appropriate representation. City of Mobile, please be advised that we are up for the challenge of ensuring that the redistricting process works. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Aberhart, following James Aberhart is Wade Perry.
Mr. Aberhart, present, not Mr. Perry. I'm a clerk.
Yes, Wade Perry. Following Wade Perry is Tiffany Harris-James.
Hello, my name's Wade Perry. Uh, I live at two four five four Elloon Drive, that's E.L.O.O.N.G., uh, lifelong Mobileian and proud resident of District Three. Thank you, Mr. President, for your representation. I'm here to speak on redistricting. Um, I want to echo everything that I've heard here in the last- here in the last 30 minutes, 45 minutes. It is imperative that we not only do the right thing, but that we do it the right way. Looking at the redistricting numbers, and I would encourage all of you to review the federal ruling out of the Northern District of Alabama last week, or two weeks ago, which speaks very, very clearly and specifically to the responsibility to adhere to Section 2 of the Voting Rights Amendment. But I also think it's important that we point out that how this is handled over the next couple of weeks will be a precursor to how we see annexation move forward. So, the trust, the transparency, and the tone of the next few weeks, I think, is really important to the future of the city. We're going to end up in the right place in terms of majority-minority, whether it comes from the council, the mayor, or the federal courts. But the point that I'd like to make to the council particularly is redistricting is tough. You can't take the politics out of politics. But it's better done locally. And not everybody's going to get what they want. And everybody, not everybody, some people, may have to take a little bite here or there. But it's better than sending it to the federal court and letting the federal judges do it for you because you might not like the results. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and ask you again to do the right thing and do it the right way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tiffany Harris-James, following Tiffany Harris-James is Jim Flowers.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Harris-James. My address is 6300 Breelat Road, Number 119, Mobile, Alabama, 36609. I've come here to give my, my own personal testament, and I pray that it's received in love and light. I've heard the saying-
Speaker, a little bit closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now? I've heard the saying that youth is wasted on the young. I, for one, don't agree with that statement. I believe that we can follow our elders and glean from their wisdom. We can learn why this redistricting process is important to us. Because a lot of times y'all talk, and you just probably don't understand the whole mission of it. In attending the first redistricting meeting, the energy was very passionate. I learned a lot, learned that it was important to balance out the voting population and not just the population. With that being said, I would also like to encourage young people of voting age to be more involved. You can contact organizations like Stand Up Mobile. I'm not a member, but I'm, I will sign up like Stand Up Mobile to learn why redistricting decisions influence outcomes that affect us tomorrow. Lastly, I would encourage organizations leader to complete the feedback request provided in the City of Mobile Redistricting Toolkit or online so that the young voting population can continue to learn from your experience and your wisdom. And we definitely appreciate the administration and all of their efforts and their work.
Thank you.
Jim Flowers, followed by Jim Flowers is Tony Allgood.
Mr. President, my name is Jim Flowers. I'm the rector of All Saints Episcopal Church, 151 South Anne Street in Mobile. I am just so astounded at the wisdom in this room from my brother clergy, from others. And what strikes me is that we, we really are at a historic moment. You know, our, our reputation in city government, race relations, is not a good one. And we have a chance to, to right that. This is, I went to the District 2 meeting last night, and this is just such a complicated process. And I'm an English major, I made a D in statistics, so it was just, it made me nervous. But, but it's clear that, that what we have here is that we're majority black, the city council needs to reflect that, plain and simple. The linchpin of this conversation, I think, is that we use voting age for, for determining population. Clearly, you know, that's not explicit in the Voting Rights Act, but what is explicit is that if we don't use that formula, then we're likely to be in violation of the Voting Rights Act. And as Wade Perry just said, then that's going to lead to litigation. So, we don't want that, we want to do it locally. But most of all, it just says a lot to this city that we do the right thing. So, I hope all of you, Mr. Mayor and the city council, will hear this wisdom. And I appreciate the time you've given me to speak. Thank you.
Reverend Allgood, followed by Christie Dupree.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Allgood, Tony Allgood. I reside at 214A Sales Avenue, Mobile. I've been in Mobile since 1974. The redistricting is critical. It'd be done fair and it'd be done open. I just want to get that out of the way. But I'm here to speak today against another group of people who have been very, very discriminated against because of their economic status. We're facing two pandemics. COVID pandemic and a pandemic of poverty and homelessness. There are 2.1 million Alabamians living in poverty and, or low income. Low income meaning that you cannot survive a $400 emergency. You're on the verge of being homeless. 762,000 of those are black. 141,000 are Latinx. 1.1 million are white. I hear the homeless referred to and treated alike, and this ordinance does the same. It discriminates against people for being poor. We all weren't born with a silver spoon in our mouth. We all didn't have the same opportunities to move up. Even people who worked all their life at near minimum wage jobs or minimum wage jobs have become homeless. There's no livable wage. Last week, it was talked about unintentional consequences. The city, by its policies, has helped exacerbate homelessness. We heard talk of the Airbus and air tanker and all this. That property where RV Taylor is, is very, very valuable now. So, RV Taylor will be razed, no more public housing there. Where we're already 5,000 short in public houses, in, in affordable housing here in Mobile now. 5,000 short. Where are these people going to go? Don't create more homelessness. Healthcare, you push people outside of the city limits who are homeless, it's going to be that much farther away for emergency vehicles to travel to get to them if they even find them out in the woods. You're increasing their likelihood that they will die from being homeless. Again, how can we worship a homeless Jesus on Sunday and criminalize homelessness all week long?
Mr. President, before Mr. Dupree comes to the mic, before Mr., I did miss one person that signed for Resolution 60099. So, if I could call that person now?
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Caddell. And following Barbara would be Christie Dupree.
This mask thing is definitely not a good look for me. Good morning, President Small, members of the city council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Barbara Caddell. I reside at 1321 Dolphin Street, a proud resident of District 2. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm actually here to speak about Mr. Carroll's resolution that you all agreed to co-sponsor, which provides, it's 6060099. And it specifies the process and provides some transparency for redistricting. I applaud your efforts to be transparent. In addition, I'm here to suggest one more little tweet, don't you love it? I support the use of a study of voting patterns called the Racialized, Racially Polarized Voting Study, or RPV. RPV sounds like something you drive. And my hope is that you will use this form of analysis to drive the redistricting process. In order to have a factual basis to ensure compliance with the Voting Rights Act, such a study could measure the outcomes of voting patterns to determine whether and the extent to which voters of different racial and ethnic groups exhibit different candidate preferences in an election. This could be a very helpful way to assess and resolve any potential issues that may arise under the Voting Rights Act. It also addresses some of the discontent and distrust that I hear displayed in this meeting when we talk about redistricting. Having a study done that would provide facts for people might dispel some of that. It would act as a compass in, in realizing equality in the political arena. It could also help to create a single source of information for everyone, both stakeholders and officials, to review. And understanding and working from the same set of facts provides more efficient decision-making and narrow, and it narrows any areas of dispute to be resolved. I truly hope that you will accept this suggestion in the spirit in which it is offered. I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Just one second, Madam Clerk, what's her name again, I'm sorry?
This Barbara Caddell.
Ms. Caddell?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Caddell. Just, I heard you saying that a study. Could you elaborate just by 15 seconds what you mean by study again, for me?
Well, it's called a racially polarized voting study. It's fairly commonly used. A lot of times, you see it in court cases where it's ordered. That it, it's an, it's an examination by political scientists typically of voting patterns in different parts of the city. It, it gives meat to the bones of some contentions that people are being treated unfairly. It also dispels notions that things are not working right because it will say in District X. And I feel a little inhibited about going into too much detail because I've never done one of these studies, I've just read about them. So, please take that as a huge disclaimer. But it's my understanding that political scientists can analyze voting patterns in different voting precincts to see the likelihood of a cohesive minority that could be voted out of office by a cohesive majority. Or it can say, like in District 2, many of us who are in the, in a minority status will cross over and vote for another minority even though it's a different racial minority. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's sort of out, it gives you some, a place to land when you say, this is the fair district. Look at the analysis of the voting plan, the voting pattern of this district.
Okay, I'd like to ask the administration, I mean, has, any such study has been done, you know, with this, you know, particular redrawing? That, you know, that might be come before the council?
So, I can answer that, Mr. President, I can answer that question. We have not done a racial polarization voting study, but, but it is common.
Yeah, I would like, you know, thank you so much for coming. You know, I have, personally, myself, I have made it known that, to the administration, to some of my colleagues, that would, would not mind having a third party, you know, a rubical third party, you know, to look at, you know, the lines, especially before the administration give it, give it to us. You know, I've heard many speakers come before us on this morning, you know, stating that, you know, there's, could be, you know, probably mistrust, misinformation. Heard about best practice, transparency, and fairness. And, but most of all, you know, trusted and stay away from federal courts. You know, pretty much, you know, the reason I've been asking for a third party to look at this, make sure that transparences, transparency, excuse me, fairness, all of that be covered. And then plus a third party, a rubical third party, don't have a dog in a, in a fight. And I still state, you know, this, this afternoon, about 12, that I would like for the administration to consider, you know, using a third party to make sure that the district lines are fair, you know, across the board before they actually give it to the council. And I also hope that the administration also listen to each speaker and when they're going to the different districts, to make sure that those questions, those concerns are addressed in those meetings and everything. Okay? Madam Clerk?
Christie Dupree, following Christie Dupree, Bellina Green.
Good afternoon. My name is Christie Dupree. I live at 1604 Apex Court, Mobile 36693. I'm here to talk briefly about the proposed ordinance dealing with the homeless. I grew up here. I left for 20 years, and I've been back another 21 years. Three years ago, I was led to offer assistance to the homeless. Since then, I have delivered, with the help of Kingswood United Methodist Church, thousands of meals, bottled water, clothes, and supplies to what Jesus called the lesser of these. My friends and I hand out 100-plus meals each week. And in the last couple of weeks, we've handed out countless blankets, hats, gloves, scarves, et cetera. I have volunteered at McKinney Place, the point-in-time homeless count, and have joined forces with Elizabeth Chipulich and the homeless in Mobile Facebook page. It was, through these experiences, I learned firsthand what these camps entail. Yes, they are filthy, scary, and dilapidated. But it is through these camps that our homeless find security. If this ordinance proposed by the city goes through, it will mean absolute desperation and will lead to an increase in crime throughout the city of Mobile. Clearing out the camps will not eliminate anything, it will only escalate the problem. Please consider offering services to the homeless. And this problem can't be swept under the rug. Getting rid of the camps is not a solution. They're not going to pack their bags and catch the next bus out of town. It's going to just put them in other places, and the homeless will be desperate. And this, this, it's not a solution. A solution is to hopefully prepare a homeless village like some of our neighbors have created. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before Ms. Green comes, I would like to let the public know that in pre-council, we had discussed that we will have a committee meeting on Wednesday, March the 2nd, after council meeting. And we're going to lay this particular item over to Tuesday, March the 8th, just for your information. And in the groups that would like to bring any type of ideas to the city, we ask that you contact Ms. Anitra Henderson. Can you give us your email address or phone number right quick just so the public can have it, please?
Sure. My phone number is 251-208-7806. I'm also located in the homeless in Mobile Facebook group. I'm also located in the homeless, um, in Mobile Facebook group, and my email address is A N I T R A dot H E N D E R S O N at cityofmobile.org.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Henderson. Again, asking all groups to please contact her. We will have a month before this come back to this council, and we'll have enough time to discuss it before our committee meeting, which will be on Wednesday, March the second. And we'll lay this particular item for a vote on March the eighth. Ms. Green?
Ms. Green is addressing, I'm sorry, Resolution thirty-nine zero zero three.
Good morning, mayor, council, vice, uh, president council, vice, vice president of council. I come before you this morning to speak about the homeless issue. I too was homeless, running from an abusive marriage, which Chief Baptiste knew. I was having to go around and stay with different family members, different friends, hiding from abuse, and I was homeless, still running a nonprofit, a ministry of food pantry. I come to you to tell you, Mr. Reynolds, homelessness does not look like me.
Ms. Green, Ms. Green, you cannot.
I'm sorry. Okay. Homelessness does not look like me. I had a daughter at McGill and one at LSU that was in college. And many of you didn't know I was homeless, but Chief Baptiste knew I was homeless because I was wanted from abuse. My family wouldn't help me because they were too afraid of it. So I ask you, do what's in, I see too many women on the street. I got a homeless vet right now I'm feeding, and that was the first female to be put on a ship. I come to you and beg you, please do something. Let's come together and work together and put a facility there to be able to meet the needs because homeless does not always come as the womaness on the street picking up plants that don't have a job because I had a job and a degree. I pray for you for righteousness. We've got to do things decent and in order if we call ourselves Christian. If not, we on the other master team. We're not on Christ's team because Christ fed the poor. Matthew twenty-five, thirty-five through forty. Read your Bible, the Catholics, pick up your Bible and read it for yourself. Don't just let the Archbishop quote it to you. Know it for yourself because a charge has been laid today. We gonna get in trouble. We gonna be in trouble. We already got death on our land. How much more does God got to allow to come against us for us to get in on? Be blessed and highly faithful.
Uh, Latonya Patterson, following Latonya Patterson is Fred Wheeler.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor, and other participants. My name is Latonya Patterson. My address is five oh five New Shallow Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, which is District One. I am the founder and executive director of Ambitiously Him and Her King Foundation. We are a five O C, one three, I'm, I'm sorry, we are a nonprofit organization that serves young parents between the ages of thirteen through twenty-three. Young parents meaning mothers, fathers, and pregnant youth. I was a young parent, but the organization wasn't inspired by me, it was inspired by my son, who became a young father, single father at the age of seventeen. We have served since January twenty twenty, we have served over six hundred young parents and issued out twenty-five hundred care packages. Our care packages include diapers, wipes, um, clothing for parents, hygiene for parents, clothing for kids, and formula. Our mission is to help with assisting with the, um, needs, the appropriate skills that they need to be positive productive parents because I feel that a lot of our youth in the community that aren't working or furthering their education or even committing crimes are young parents. And this is why we're pushing the organization to help our young parents in the community fulfill the needs that they need, like furthering their education and giving them the appropriate skills to get out in the community and work. We have worked closely with a lot of other organizations like AIDS Alabama South, Department of Human Resources, and we've even worked closely with social workers in the NICU at Women and Children, providing young parents with the, um, care packages that they need as well as car seats. So I'm asking the city to back up what we're trying to do with the organization, and that's to help more young parents in the community live a positive productive life.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming down. If you can just send like any proposal that you have to the administration and, uh, the administration can, you know, see by working with you and then therefore they have come, you know, to the council and present it to us.
Okay, and all of you have packets as well that have all the information in, in it that you need?
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Um, Ms. Patterson, thank you for everything that you're doing. Uh, my mother, uh, was a teen mother, and, um, it was because of organization similar to yourself that I'm now here today. So thank you for what you're doing, and of course, thank you for being a part of District One, and, um, I would love to connect with you.
Thank you so much.
Fred Wheeler, following Fred Wheeler is Reggie Hill.
I feel like I've been payroll back in the Navy. Good morning, council president, Small, city council. My name is Freddie Wheeler. I live at eighty-four oh five Sterling Drive, Mobile, Alabama, three six six nine five. I am the legislative liaison for Dixie Abate of Alabama, the state's only motorcycle rights organization. And I would like to ask everyone in the auditorium to participate in an experiment. If you will, please close your eyes for five seconds. One, two, three, four, five. In those five seconds, if you were in a car driving down Dolphin at thirty miles per hour, you have traveled almost the entire block of the north side of Cathedral Square, from South Claiborne to North Jackson, or just over two hundred and twenty feet. Five seconds is the average time it takes to read a text according to NHTSA, the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. Now think of how many times you or a loved one has walked the Dolphin or any other street in Mobile. We often hear the members speak of having a safer city, having a pedestrian-friendly city, and distracted driving has killed an average of one person per week over the past ten years. I'm here today asking the council and the city to support a bill that's currently in the House of Representatives of H P twenty-four, or the hands-free bill. It will save countless lives if it were to pass. This effort failed by one boat last legislative session sadly because most of the Mobile legislative delegation voted against it. The bill costs nothing, expends no funds other than the ink required to change the law. The difference between this law and the current anti-texting law is that this makes it illegal to hold any electronic device, and it will also be the primary initiating event. On behalf of the thousands of motorcyclists, bicyclists, and pedestrians that use city streets every day, please consider supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill regarding resolutions zero one zero ninety-two, zero eight zero ninety-four, zero eight one sixteen, twenty-one zero ninety-six, sixty zero ninety-seven, sixty zero ninety-eight, sixty zero ninety-nine, sixty-four zero zero four, sixty-four zero zero five, thirty-one one oh one, sixty-one ten, zero nine one eighteen, thirty-one one twenty, thirty-one one twenty-one, thirty-one one twenty-two, zero eight one fifteen.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Uh, the United States of America was built on the backs, blood, sweat, tears, brains, and innovative thinking of people who look like me. Uh, while I believe our history should be, um, honored every single day, I'm grateful that our country has designated a specific time of the year to recognize the great work and contributions of blacks. Um, let us all say thank you to Carter G. Woodson.
Great, Mr. Hill.
For establishing.
Mr. Hill, can you give us your address, please?
Which is now known as Black History Month. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Centus Street. Again, I want to make sure that we recognize, uh, Carter G. Woodson in the midst of these hundred and eighty seconds. Um, I rise today to address the general items that were announced beginning with sixty-four, dash zero zero four, sixty-four, dash zero zero five. What is the intended purpose of these resigning, uh, of the residential to business, and have any specifics been provided on what developments will be made, uh, in the listed property area? Uh, zero one, dash zero nine two, is this a renewal of the existing tennis coach contract, and is there any update on how similar contracts can be approved for various sports? Zero eight, dash zero nine four, and zero eight, dash one one six, the agenda doesn't offer any specifics regarding cost of fuel. What is the price for each of these line items, and how many city vehicles by the number exactly are impacted by this purchase? Uh, six zero, dash zero nine seven through zero nine eight, would a citizen have to submit an F O I, uh, to retain the individuals, individual results, excuse me, of these settlements? And for now, how much did this cost, uh, the city? Zero eight dash one one five. Uh, the art museum is the intricate part of the city. Uh, please approve the request listed, um, on this line item. Uh, I will remind this body last week when this was judged as were approved with no opportunity for the citizens to comment, so it's not like we don't rush through anything down here. Three one dash one zero one, uh, what are the planned enhancements intended to be enforced, uh, with resources from the grant? And how can we ensure that this will not amplify the illegal personal invasion, um, of the common citizen? What are we doing to prevent criminal surveillance? Uh, zero, excuse me, six zero dash zero nine nine, please ensure that the, uh, voting populace is the reflection of what, and this is what this I B A T tells, we don't have to do much on that, we're speakers about it all, all, all week. Uh, sixty dash one one zero, uh, is there anything that would prevent the allocation from being unanimously approved on behalf of the Child Advocacy Center? And once approved, when will the Child Advocacy Center, excuse me, Child Advocacy Center, uh, receive these funds? Zero nine dash one one eight, uh, who has been designated to oversee these funds for Africa Town, and, and how will the proper use of these funds be evaluated? Uh, what are the specific goals and expectations for the resources? Three one dash one two two, uh, what updates have been made to the small business assistance A R P funds? And what is the process for local small business, uh, local small businesses, excuse me, to obtain these resources? Uh, three one dash one two zero through one two one, uh, while I appreciate, um, finally seeing the social service A R P funds on the agenda, I believe this is a blatant example of discrimination. I'll offer more details next week, you know, we only get, uh, a hundred and eighty seconds. Nonetheless, I will ask how many organizations are already receiving performance contracts but also receive funds from the A R P social services? Uh, two one dash zero nine six, are there any existing examples of cities that have organized crime prevention strategies which included ShotSpotter, um, as merely a component of the approach, and what results are available pertaining to that? Um, I would like to commend, uh, Mr. Reynolds for addressing the importance of protecting the privacy of civilians.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Hill. Um, majority of your questions have to do with the, um, finance director, uh, Mr. Holt. I'm not sure if he's prepared this, this afternoon to address those questions. I ask him to, I'm sorry.
Could you have him submit his questions in writing so that we can keep up with him?
Yeah, yeah, um, Mr. Hill.
Mr. Small, that's submitted in writing, we don't have a response. What do we recommend that we do? And as well, if there would be somebody who could offer additional minutes, because that's what, that's what we're missing.
Mr. Hill. That's the, uh, chief of staff had directed, or asked rather, that you submit your questions by email. Uh, majority of them, like I was saying, you know, was come with finance, which is our finance director, submit those to our finance director, Mr. Holt, and also Mr. Baptiste for your public sector, um, uh, questions and then, you know, everything. Anything from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Small, um, at the risk of, uh, maybe upsetting some, it sounded like Mr. Hill was about to compliment me, but I'd like to, I'd like to extend another minute to Mr. Hill so that he can finish his statement, please.
Thank you so much, uh.
Majority of the council, majority of the council? I'm okay. Majority of the council. All right, Mr. Hill.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, but I do want to commend, uh, Mr. Reynolds for addressing the importance of protecting the privacy of civilians, um, as we move forward and whatever we're going to do to make our city better and safer, we need to ensure that the citizens at the forefront of this. And I believe that's something that he brought to the forefront for the administration to pursue, and I would love to see that, uh, see the results of that. Again, that's primarily why I asked the question, do we have any examples of other cities who have only used ShotSpotter as a component with additional metrics to be added to that to ensure that we're making this a safe city? So I do want to, I did want to commend, uh, Mr. Reynolds for bringing that to the attention of the executive body, and I hope that it's something that is considered. And for the citizens, that's, that's what this is for. Thank you for recognizing that you can allot additional minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, I wanted to wait before I even commented on all the statements that I've, that I've heard today, but I might just throw a few, might even do a Fred Richardson here because my mind's running. Um, today's February first. It's Black History Month. We don't hear very much about black history in the city of Mobile. We don't see very much of it anymore like we used to. But what spurred this is that I saw earlier a guy sitting on the left over there that I didn't expect. See, I saw Wimp James sitting up there. Wimp James might be ninety years old right now, if not older than ninety. Wimp James was part of the process from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-five. Now, a lot of us aren't old enough to remember the process, but I was fortunate because I had a mother that was in it, and a mother that taught me so much about it, and then a mother that took me to places and rooms where I heard conversations that I never ever thought that I would have to recall or recollect when it comes to black history in the city of Mobile. See, I knew Charles Harris, James Montgomery, Michael Figures, Yvonne Kennedy, God, John, I mean, Robert Gillyard, Hazel Fonier, Leo Fonier. I knew them personally. So I grew up in the system of black history in the city of Mobile, and I grew up with people that made history in the city. So what I want to do right now is I want to tell you a story that may have been forgotten by some of us that are in our early thirties and fifties because most of us were in high school when this happened. See? Story goes like this. Started in nineteen seventy-two with John Ella Floor and Wally Bolden, where they bought suit against the city of Mobile for racism. They won, and then it was said, no, it was appealed all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States of America. Now, this is Mobile we're talking about. So the Supreme Court said, no, no, it's got to go back to Mobile, and the intent of racism has to be proved in Mobile. In nineteen eighty-five, there was no representation of minorities in the city. We're under a three-commissioned form of government. There was no representative, no representation for people of color. But when it came back to the city of Mobile in nineteen eighty-five, the city of Mobile was found guilty of racism by Judge Pittman, which spurred what we now have, and we call the Zogby Act, which is a seven councilmember form of government with a mayor, weak mayor, strong government. And we had representation for the first time. We had three minority councilmembers, or three black councilmembers. But here we are, thirty-seven years later. Thirty-seven years later. I remember, I was only in high school when this happened. I never even realized that when I was in high school what was happening. I was twenty-six years old when I realized the gravity and brevity of what happened and what it did for minorities in the city. But here we are, thirty-seven years later, and we have come full circle. This time we come full circle with a city that is a majority-black city. And we're just past the census count. And the census count suggests that there should be four black counties. And the census count suggests that there should be four black council members. Four black districts based on voting populace. It's clear that there's some mistrust. And the mistrust is because of what happened before 1985. There are some people still living in the city that still feel that mistrust. That's why I support the request today that I heard of a racial polarization study. Normally those studies are done before the lines are even considered to be drawn, redrawn when there is a total flip in population like we have right now. I believe it's 51% to 40% or 41%. So I suggest that we also do that. But it's clear what has to happen here. There's two things that we have to do. We have to uphold the one person, one vote advocate of the 14th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America. And also uphold the Voting Rights Act. Now, it's clear that the one person, one vote says that we have to be spread out equally. But it's also clear that it also suggests that in being spread out equally, that you have to be represented based on the total number of people there, meaning that voting population. So. I'm going to reserve a lot of my comments till later. But being that it is February, I thought we needed that little piece of black history from the city of Mobile. Because like I said, my son's only 26 years old. He has no idea what happened in 1985. I'm only 52. I was in the 10th grade in 1985. Most of us up here are not even old enough to remember the perils that it took to get here. But now we have an opportunity to move forward and represent, and have representation that truly reflects the city, both based on the voting age population.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I've got one question to the administration. Redistricting plans that have moved forward, are they fully in line legally with federal, state, Zogby Act and voting rights requirements?
So the short answer is, as we stand right now, is yes. But I want to tell you all, yeah, we've had a lot of conversation here. I mean, answers, yes. Is, is it on all fours with the Voting Rights Act, with Zogby, Marietta? And, and a great deal of what is said here has been listened to, and it should be listened to. This should be a robust process where people contribute and the public is very involved. Um, what I, I think folks want to really understand is how are we working through the process? Because we're not finished yet. Remember, after the mayor submits his report before the 12, we will still have to work through the process. But before that even, we are still working through the process. What people are asking for is not unreasonable. What people are asking for is not unreasonable. And a great deal of what has been said today is just people expressing their constitutional right to be involved in the process. And there is nothing wrong with that. Does it meet the requirements as it stands now? The current version, yes, it does. Are we still working towards more? Yes, we are.
Uh, Mr. President?
But. Uh, it's going to be Mr. Reynolds and then Mr. Carroll.
I, I appreciate the comment by my colleague here on the council and the executive branch. I'd just ask that in the future, it may be more appropriate for us to have these sort of discussions within order. Right now, we're really just kind of operating out of order. I mean, those comments should have been reserved for 60 dash 099, you know, as part of the discussion for that ordinance. So I'd just ask that in the future, maybe we could, you know, do those in line with the rules of the council.
Mr. Carroll.
We can extend this meeting and I can wait. I'll be glad to, uh, uh, pick up my armor and put it on and do what's right and stand my ground.
And other council members. Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance held over. 39 003, ordinance regarding urban camping and improper use of public places.
Don't move.
Second, impromptu, properly second, in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. President, I'd like to, um, offer the amendments we discussed in our public safety meeting, uh, last week. And those are on file with the clerk. And those are, um, we discussed this morning in pre-council, so I hope everybody would join me. So that when we have a committee meeting, we're all operating on a clean version of the ordinance.
Second.
Uh, we improperly move in second for amendment in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Amendment passed, going back to original motion.
Move to lay over until March 2nd?
Oh, March.
No, March 8th, rather, March 8th.
Improperly move in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Iron laid over to March 8th.
Resolutions held over. Um. 01 091, authorized agreement between the city of Mobile, Aldat, the city of Sims, and Mobile County for traffic signal improvements along Schillinger Road, Theodore Do, Dawes Road, Quarter, and Airport Boulevard. 01 092, authorized agreement with Jake Ecker for, uh, to provide tennis lessons and clinic for Parks and Recreation. 08 093, approved item base bid, street sweeper brooms. 08 094, approved purchase order for fuel. 08 095, approved purchase order to C D W government for network control software for I T department. 21 096, authorized contract with ShotSpotter for subscription services for management of technical technology consulting services, funding from the, uh, A R P. 60 097 and 98, approved settlement agreement and release of claims.
Don't move.
Second. Improperly move in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Pass.
60 099, established redistricting, redistricting guidelines for council districts in the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second. Improperly move in second, in the discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I need to add a friendly amendment to this motion, um, to this resolution. And that is to, uh, amend the motion with language as approved by the League of Women Voters that has been submitted to everyone else.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second in the discussion on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Going back, another discussion.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mr. President, I, I.
Mr. Reynolds.
I want to just make it known to my colleague, Mr. Carroll especially, that, you know, my comments really weren't made, you know, adversely affecting any way. It was just simply to follow the rules. And I, uh, am proud to have, uh, the council on this and the mayor sponsoring this, uh, resolution. And it, I heard comments today, clear and transparent process. And, um, this is what we're all resolving amongst all people, is that we agree. So thank you, Mr. Carroll, for seeing the need for this and putting it forward. And thank you, everyone else, for joining together on this clear and transparent process that we've laid out.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
I guess we can, uh, take up the shield now before we actually grab our helmet. But let's be clear here. Is that when we are dealing with a population that's general and not the voting population, that means that we can have a thousand kids in a district that can, that are non-voting, that are minorities, and still not have representation that represents those kids? Under the 14th Amendment, one person, one vote, it still requires that those kids have representation like them. Even though we are saying that we meet Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act and also Section 5, which was, you know, part of the Voting Rights Act, knowing that the Voting Rights Act was shredded apart by Shelby versus Holder, and we don't need preclearance. So we don't have to get those things anymore. But the truth of the matter is, it doesn't matter if the kid is a baby or an infant. But it's part of the majority, then they too deserve the right to be represented by someone like them.
Mr. President?
You finish, Mr. Carroll.
I'll wait.
Mr. Mr. Day.
I've stayed out of this, and I have cautioned my colleagues to stay out of this. But there is absolutely no requirement in the United States Constitution or any federal law that this council have four black members. What the law is is that minorities, including blacks, have an equal opportunity to elect people that, that look like them, if that's what they want to do. But there's no requirement that that process, that election process, ends up with X amount of white people or X amount of black people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another council member.
One last thing.
Mr. Carroll.
In order for us to have an opportunity to be elected, we must first have a district with an electorate that gives us the opportunity. You know, it's like living in Tolmanville back in the day. You know, if you have 600 blacks that live in Tolmanville, and then you have 30 others that live there too, but the 30 others aren't you, but they are invoking or, or looking at things from their eyes and representing their views, what happens to the 600 people that aren't being represented? They have to be represented too. Now, I would break that down into plain language, but it would sound inappropriate. So but for those of you that understand what I'm saying, please understand it. If there's 600 people on a forum, let's say, and 30 other people on that forum that are making the rules for the 600 that aren't part of their culture, their life, or their living, and don't see that basis, then the 600 other people on the forum are not represented. So the 600 people should be represented with the voting populace, not the general populace.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones.
I was not going to say anything in this meeting. I sit here and I've listened to everybody speak. And I've assimilated the words and the meanings and the desires that I've heard. And I look at the processes that have taken place to get us to where we are today. The 2020 census happened last year. The shift in population happened before our last election. We elected Mayor Sandy Stimson with 62% of the vote. The voting age population of this city, the demographics, white 44.36%, black 48.38%. That's the demographics that put our mayor in office. And I hear over and over and over again that we have to have voting age population taken into account, or it's not fair. Or it's not right. Was the last election not fair? Was the last election not right? I submit to you just the opposite. 2005, let's go back, we like talking about history. 2005, mayoral elections, we put Sam Jones in office, nine-year Navy vet, eight years on the county commission. He won by 7,000 votes in a white majority city. I've said all along, the character and content of the people that we have on the ballot is absolutely essential to the positive outcome of the results. And we've seen it over and over again. Was that a fair election? Was that a just election? I submit to you, it was. What really discourages me as a representative of my district and this great city is what I hear when you say that I'm a white elected official and I cannot represent everybody in my district. Let that soak in for a minute. I took an oath and a pledge a very long time ago to take care of everyone in my charge. Everyone, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation. We've had pastors speak over and over and over today, and we talk about God and we talk about Jesus. What about the folks up here that live that? Every day. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Is that not the life that we are supposed to live? Is that not the leadership that we are supposed to represent everybody by? I represent every race, ethnicity, sex, and sexual orientation in my district proudly and firmly. And I think everybody up here does the same thing. We talk about east versus west. Look at the CARES Act money, 48 or 49 million dollars of 58 million is coming right here to districts 2 and 1 and 3. That's the east side of the interstate. Are we really discriminating? I don't think we are. Because you know what? At the end of the day, everybody up here is trying to do the right thing to move us together as a city. And that means taking care of everybody equally. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President, that would be Mr. Pan and Mr. Carroll.
When I made the decision to, to run for office, it was because I wanted to see change in my community. And I want to be a part of that change. And I think at moments in life, we haven't been honest. And the truth is, we've been discrim- discriminated. Now, we might not be doing it now, but we can't deny systematic racism has been in place. We can't deny. So people are coming down here because they experienced that. 1965, that's when we passed the Vayn Ray Act. Hey, that's not that long, that's when my mom was born. So we cannot act like this doesn't exist, but we have to do it right. I agree with Councilman Small that it's important to have. I agree with Councilman Small that it's important to have someone, look, I would like to have an outside party. This is an important decision for the next ten years. We can do this right. We can be the example and be fair. It's not about having another fourth black person, it's about if that, what I believe the people are coming down here saying, it's about giving them the opportunity to choose who they want. Now, we can argue, we can fight, but we can do it right. And I believe that we can do it right and be successful. So, hopefully, the administration is listening. Hopefully, they're listening, they're going out in the community, having these redistricting information sessions and virtual sessions. And hopefully, the council is also listening and the people are coming down because we represent them and listening what they're saying and taking their concerns in. We can, we can argue, we can fight, representation is important. Representation is important. Thank you, Mr. President.
Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's clear that we're talking about council districts here and not a mayor's race. It's clear that we're talking about different sections of the city and not an overall vote of the population. If it is so near and dear that we and us and you are going to do this correct and we're going to get this right, then I hope that we, he, say, and you cast your vote in support of doing what's right, if that's what you see us doing.
End of the council members.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
Since I'm the only one that has not spoken, I would just like to say that we are pleased to have people come down and speak to us. We enjoy having them come and we certainly listen to what they have to say and take it to heart. We are not here today to vote on the redrawn lines, we are far from it. So, this debate today is certainly, in some ways, a little early. But it's good to get out into the public where we stand on these things. So, again, a long way from getting this thing finished. The mayor has a deadline to present a proposed draft to us. And then the council has so many months ahead of us then before we have to vote on anything. So, don't think that it is a done deal at this point. We know what the process is and we have certainly heard from a lot of folks in the community week after week here lately. So, yes, we, we certainly understand where they're coming from and we appreciate everyone who is coming. And that will, that will do it for me. Hopefully, we can move on with our agenda at this point.
End of the council members.
And I would like to say, I hate that she had left out the room, but my piano teacher was in here earlier, she just left out when Mr. Penn was talking. And many people don't know, I, I play a little bit, and I ain't gonna say I'm an expert in playing, but I'm on the, you know, micro, the, you know, piano player around here. But I know I'm not an expert and she taught me piano lessons, Beverly Townsend, for at least a minimum of ten years. And I can get around a little bit and play around. But, but what I'm saying, you know, about that is that, you know, I'm not an expert in drawing lines. And I agree with Ms. Gregory, this is not really in front of us today. And as you look at the agenda, I'm one of the councilmen that did not join and be a sponsor, and I have my own personal reason why. But again, as I was saying that, you know, I'm not an expert and that's one reason why, you know, I was asking for a third party to look at this. You know, there are some concerns that, you know, some of the people that are drawing up the lines are now currently are the same ones that drew up the lines, you know, ten plus years ago. And there are some, some concerns out in the community that those lines wasn't drawn up correctly, you know, ten plus years ago on the last redistricting. And going back, you know, ten plus years later, you know, some of the people that still had drew the lines then still have their hands in it now. But what I'm getting at is that, you know, I really believe, and as we heard some of the people that came out this morning, ask for true fairness and transparency, and which I do commend the administration for going out into the community and going out to the community to hear the, the public. And I do commend them for staying the whole entire time to hear those speakers. But again, there is some, you know, misinformation that's circling out there. There is some, you know, some, some concerns that is circling out there. And even while I've been at council meeting, someone sent me an article that came out today, you know, February first, saying X, 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 X. You know, I haven't had a chance to read the article, but, you know, how much trueness is out there. But again, I do commend the administration for opening up their doors and listen to the public outcry and ask them to continue to listen to the public outcry and try to address every concern. One of the concerns that one of the citizens, and again, I forgot her name, but she brought up, you know, has a study, polarization study has been done. And the question was pretty much, no. I'm asking the administration to use all resources, all resources that's available to help to ease the minds of those that have some concerns and everything. And again, I do thank my colleagues, ninety days in, I think it's one of the biggest things that we have challenged since the ninety days, but we're going to get through this and everything. Anything else from the council?
And now, again, the original resolution as amended.
Did we vote on the amendment?
No, we hadn't voted yet. Yeah. Going back to the original resolution as amended.
No. Did we vote on the amendment?
I think we voted on the amendment.
We have not voted on the amendment.
I thought we voted on the amendment.
No, so we did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Now, I'm going back to the original resolution as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Pass.
Mr. President.
Ms. Carroll.
Thank you all for supporting this, a clear and transparent process with the city is of the most importance.
Ms. Lambert.
Ordnance is being introduced for the first time, sixty-four zero zero four through sixty-four zero zero six.
By council rules, this will, these will lay over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced, thirty-one one hundred through sixty-one
A move? Yeah, I thought we just did that. All right, waive the rules in order to consider these resolutions.
Second.
Motion properly, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Run for.
Thirty-one one hundred, authorized grant application to A M for the Alabama Recycling Fund Grant, thirty-one one zero one, authorized grant application to Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for Homeland Security Enhancing Cyber Security Grant, thirty-one one zero two, authorized grant application to Bloomberg Land Threepies for Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund Grant, forty-one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, one oh seven, or fixing the cost for demolition of structures at fifteen thirty Northview Drive, six twenty-four Crawford Lane, thirteen oh six Pocimino Street, eighteen oh one Pike Avenue, twenty oh six Stockton Avenue, fifty-eight one zero eight, assessed cost removal of weeds, weed lien group sixteen sixteen, sixty-one zero nine, approval award or special bonus to the Administrative Services Employee of the Month, sixty-one ten, determining appropriation to the Child Advocacy Center serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second. Motion probably move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Pass.
Resolution is being introduced, zero-one one 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 through twenty-one one twenty-five.
These will be laid over per council rules with the exception of zero-eight one one five, which I would move to waive the rules in order to vote on zero-eight one one five.
I thought we were taking twenty-one one twenty-five.
Twenty-one one twenty-five.
The cruise terminal.
Oh, yeah, that's the thirty thousand, yes. Include twenty-one dash one twenty-five as well to waive the rules in order to vote on these two.
Second.
Motion probably move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Most passes.
Twenty-eight one fifteen, approved as a purchase order to carry a corporation for children for the art museum. And twenty-one one twenty-five, authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal Repair Rico Flooring.
Second. I mean, so moved.
Second. Yeah, we brushed our names. Motion probably move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Call for public hearings, forty-one twenty-six, call for public hearing to consider the application of Ruby Smith doing business as sure transportation to operate a shuttle service scheduled February fifteenth.
A move.
Second.
Motion probably move in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Public hearings call.
Announcements.
District Six, Councilman Jones.
Thanks, Mr. President. Had an opportunity on Friday to go to a Boys and Girls Club on Cody Road and, you know, we, we talked about funding that organization. But I can tell you, I was absolutely and extremely impressed with the staff. They probably had forty-five, fifty youth and kids on site. The, the programs that they had, plural, were absolutely exceptional, challenging, focused on STEM, sports, computers, music, a whole variety of things. And I, I can't see a, a better use of the funds that we have available to help our youth go forward. And I know, Corey, you're a part of that and, you know, kudos to you for what you do with, with that organization because what, what a testament to greatness. On, on Friday evening, there was a fire down the road from my house on East Drive, started by a candle, smoke filled the house. By the time I got there, there were a couple of fire trucks, firemen were, were coming out, the fire was extinguished, police were on site. But the thing that, that stuck out with me, I was focused in on, on a, a young man that was in the house, had come out, and, and the house was filled with smoke. They were all in gas masks, smoke was still coming out of the house. And this individual, the, the chief told me, was still in training. And I just want to take a second to congratulate the firefighter academy for the work that you're doing to prepare these young individuals to go into an actual fire and, and come out safe and, and to help save the lives of our citizens. Kudos to you. And, and, you know, too often, we, we talk about all the negative that's going on. I, I think that's some, an area, and I know we're getting ready to graduate some, some more classes coming up in the near future, but, but well done, job well done. I was extremely pleased to see that young gentleman still in the academy and, and being a productive member on, on that engine. Lastly, we have a redistricting meeting tonight in our district, District Six, Connie Hudson Center at six P M. So, if, if you want to know about how redistricting will impact our district, which it will, come to the meeting at nine, six P M, look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
I have no analysis.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Jones, for visiting the Cody Road branch. And the Boys and Girls Club is doing amazing things. We have some of our partners here, Demetrius Smith, where I see you. We also provide mental health for our young people. So, it's, it's a great opportunity to have partners to support. So, again, thank you so much for, for visiting. On February the eighth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M, District One will have our redistricting information community session. Will be located at the Dumas Wesley Community Center on one-two-six, on one-hundred-twenty-six Mobile Street, Mobile, Alabama. So, I'm inviting District One to come out. If you have any questions or concerns, you can get some more information at this particular meeting. After Mardi Gras, we will start back having our community meetings. We're going to send some things out, but we're planning on doing a meeting on, on a regular basis in every community in our five communities that we represent, that are represented in District One. So, again, thank you, come out on February the eighth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Councilman Days, District Five.
Thank you, Mr. President. The District Five meeting on the redistricting plan will be tomorrow night at Westminster Presbyterian Church, the corner of Airport Boulevard and Sage Avenue at six o'clock P M. Anyone interested in this matter can show up there and be advised to the process that's been adopted with respect to the redistricting proposal and the proposals that are in front of us at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Days. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night was the redistricting meeting for District Two. We met at Villa Center or Mary Abbey Burke, was attended by maybe twenty or thirty people. A lot of people in District Two do not have internet service or access to computers. There was some complaint about that. I asked that when going to other districts that we send a mail or, or a card to those individuals that may be seventy-five, eighty, that want to participate, that don't know. We, we had a lot of conversation about that, so I asked the administration to do that. On February fifteenth will be a District Two meeting, starting at six o'clock at the Harmon Recreation Center. I asked last night for those that were missing, that wanted to be a part of redistricting, that we do a brief redistricting overview again on February fifteenth, if it doesn't conflict with another district. Also, at that meeting, I've asked that the redevelopment department from the city to be there to discuss blighted properties and how properties can be purchased from the city, from the nuisance abatement or land bank to get them back on a viable, viable rolls. Also, in attendance will be Nick Amberger or someone from that department that can talk to us about repaving in the streets that are going to be paved in that area and what we're doing about flooding and drainage structures. I've also asked that the police precinct commander be there so that we can meet the one responsible for our area. Now, Parks and Recreation is Black History Month, and Parks and Recreation is going to start a series of movies every Wednesday at the Sears Community Center through Black History Month. Please come out. I will put this flyer on my newsletter, I will send it out to everyone else, we will also send it out via text as we've been doing other things, but please come out. Parks and Recreation does a great job in getting information to the community, and this is another opportunity to see how well we do things at the city of Mobile. Mr. President, I thank you for the opportunity to have announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And as, follow with my other colleagues about announcing, the meeting for District Three redistricting will be held on February the ninth at the Christ Temple Apostolate Church, which is located at eight oh one Virginia Street at six o'clock P M. And again, that date is February the ninth. And as we had heard throughout the meeting, February, we recognize Black History Month. And what is Black History Month and why do we celebrate it? You know, originally, it was established as a weed loan celebration in nineteen twenty-six by Carter G. Woodson, the founder of the Association for Study of African-American Life and History. Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievement by African-Americans and a time to recognize their central roles in the United States' history. And it's my duty for the month of February to recognize local African-Americans that had done justice for our community here locally, here within the city of Mobile. And this week, I want to recognize Dr. Yvonne Kennedy. Dr. Kennedy is an alumni of Alabama State University, and she was a leader activist and educator who has a passion for service. Led her to become the first black woman from Mobile County to be elected to the Alabama House of Representatives, the ninety-seven district in nineteen seventy, seventy-nine. A position she served-
a position she served until her death in twenty twelve. Kennedy also served as the president of the Bishop State Community College in Mobile from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand and seven, becoming the first black woman appointed president to a state community college in Alabama. She's also served as the nineteen national president of the Delta Seminitheta Sorority, Inc. from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two. A student at Alabama State University, she was crowned Miss ASU in nineteen eighty-five. And again, as Dr. Yvonne Kennedy summer her achievement and that she had done in her lifetime, but minimal great themes, I did not mention that she had done here in the city of Mobile. Is there anything else from the council? Anything from the administration? I get a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motioned second, end of discussion.